Right before this, the city council was meeting in a closed session to receive legal advice from our city attorney and we are back now. There are no changes to our agenda this evening, looking at the weeks ahead. On Tuesday, May 11th, the city council's administrative function that day to begin first round of interviews for a new city manager. Then on for our regular meeting on Wednesday, May 12th, will begin at 7:30. We'll have a proclamation for Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Our voting session that night will consist of first reading ordinances adopting the FY 2022 tax rate, our stormwater management budget and our FY 2022 budget. We'll have a single reading ordinance approving photocopy or lease and a single reading ordinance approving purchase of a building access control system. And also a resolution authorizing the closure of Anne Street on Saturday, June 22nd for Supermercado. Our work session that evening tentatively is a discussion, a continued discussion of committees. Then on Monday, May 17th, the council is again in a closed administrative function session for interviews for the city manager search. On Wednesday, May 19th, we have a second reading ordinance for our tax rate, stormwater management budget and our overall FY 2022 budget. Tentatively, our work sessions on the 19th include a report out from our urban forest manager on the multi-year plan, pilot project and tree fund. We also have tentatively the subdivision of 7402 Garland Avenue property and a discussion of committees. Tentatively, we may not be meeting Wednesday, May 26th. Many times we take the meeting off after we find a wrap-up budget, but if something urgent comes up, don't plan anything yet for the evening of May 26th because we may have a meeting, but at the moment it's tentatively will not happen. For the record tonight, we have a Mero proclamation for myalgic encephalomyelitis, or better known as chronic fatigue syndrome, Awareness Day. Chronic fatigue syndrome is a disabling multi-system neuroimmune disease characterized by persistent and profound fatigue and exhaustion, post-sto exertional relapse, sleep disturbances, unrefreshing sleep, cognitive impairment, pain, headaches, cardiac and other symptoms that leave many ME patients homebound or bedridden for years or a lifetime and as many as 75% unable to work or go to school. And whereas because of the stigma and lack of attention by the government and the research and medical communities, patients struggle to access appropriate medical care and rarely recover due to a lack of treatments as there is no diagnostic test or FDA-approved treatment, resulting in the loss of hope and thus higher rates of suicide. And whereas ME is believed to afflict at least 130 Tacoma Park residents, 7,900 in Montgomery County and 46,000 Marylanders of all ages, races, sexes and socioeconomic status and an annual cost to our state of $319 to $450 million per year in lost productivity and medical costs. And whereas the majority of ME cases are initiated by an infection, especially viral infections, there is a heightened concern that COVID-19 will trigger ME onset. Perspective studies of several different pathogens found that 10 to 12% of those infected met ME criteria six months after their infection. Coronaviruses like SARS may have even higher rates of triggering the disease. If that holds true, the prevalence of ME following COVID-19 could double within the next two years. Whereas awareness of ME should lead to increased funding for research and result in better diagnosis and treatment. Now therefore, I Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, do hereby proclaim the date of May 12th, 2021 as ME or chronic fatigue syndrome Awareness Day in order to help spread awareness of the disease, the need for research and appropriate medical care and to support individuals and their families living with ME. Thank you. And we'll go now to our agenda and we have public comments this evening. I believe we have our first public comment is on our voting items up and Arthur David Olson is already ready to go.
Arthur David Olson, Herbie Hancock Avenue. The cover sheet for the proposed bus shelter ordinance includes a fiscal considerations section that notes the $59,140 acquisition cost. There's no information in that section about ongoing costs. I've heard from the city's planning head that no regular maintenance expenses are expected. Alas, I'm confident that there will be irregular expenses for removal of graffiti. I expect that there will be insurance expenses, either explicit if the shelters are added to an insurance policy or implicit if the plan is to self-insure these shelters. Most importantly, there are replacement expenses. The shelters are costly enough that city policy calls for putting them on, adding them to the list of items for which payments are made to the equipment replacement reserve. In the case at hand, I hope the council will defer a vote on bus shelters until it has information on ongoing costs and can make a more fully informed decision. In general, I hope the council will direct the city manager to include information about ongoing costs in all matters coming before the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe I saw that I saw Kelly, our second speaker. Oh, we're going to general public comments and our first speaker for general public comments is Kelly, who's going to speak now and we'll reset the clock, Jesse, I'll reset the clock for you. You can go, Kelly.
Good evening, everyone. Good, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am thrilled to be here tonight with, with good tidings requesting a, finally requesting another street closure for Anne Street for our Summer Mercado on June 26th. I want to make sure that that's the date in the resolution. I think you said the 22nd, but it's Saturday, June 26th, 12 to 5. And we're requesting a street closure from 7 to 7. This event has gone through a very thorough process to make sure our, you know, first event back is very safe for the community. It has been approved by the Montgomery County Board of Health and they're, with the stipulation, the regulations that they're putting on it is that it's no more than 100 people at a time. So something new you'll see at this event that you haven't really seen in the past is we're going to just fully gate off the event and have a, a set entryway and exit. And we're also reducing the scope of this particular event to 10 vendors from our typical 20 and we'll have our amazing stage and performances and we'll have social distancing markers for the stage along with hand sanitizer, mask required for everybody. And similar to the farmer's market at that location, all the food is going to be to go. So no tables and no beer and alcohol sales. It's all going to be food to go. So we are looking forward to it. I hope to see everyone there who can make it and please say yes to our resolution.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. Let's see, I next, I don't believe our next two public comment folks are here. Is that correct, Ms. Carpenter? Should we go to Tom?
That's correct. Mr. Gagliardo would be next.
Great, Mr. Gagliardo, are you ready?
I am. I've followed the Junction Development Project from a distance. I've not, I've said very little about whether and what to build there. While in favor maximizing public space and building affordable housing, I can live with a wide variety of options. In other words, I haven't taken sides in this fight. Whether and what to build are now secondary to the need for the community to know how the city plans to move forward. While the council has the right, every right to discuss litigation strategy and executive session, it is now time to make your intentions known. Any reason there might be a profit may, might be proffered to continue executive sessions is outweighed by the community's need to know where this process is headed. So I have three questions. I've seen community visions list of unresolved issues. If you agree that they have correctly identified issues, please explain how the city intends to address them. Secondly, will the city join the co-op suit, file one in its own name or do nothing? And finally, will the city continue its relationship with NDC or will it terminate it? I look forward to your responses. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, I think we have Mr. Roger Schlegel.
Good evening, I'm Roger Schlegel, 6512 Allegheny, Ward 3. I invite you this evening to take a mental walk with me along the front of NDC's proposed project, beginning at the west end near the fire station. I hope this walk will help you imagine NDC's current design from a user and visitor perspective. First, we cross the new driveway. There's a bike lane in the street to our left. Car lanes have been narrowed and pushed away to accommodate this such that there will never be room for a bike lane on the other side of the street. Now there's a bus shelter just ahead of us in front of the main building entrance. Every stop bus here will block the garage exit, inviting impatient drivers to whip left into incoming vehicles. These stop buses will also block the view for truck drivers pulling out of the lay-by. And there are over 115 scheduled metro and ride-on buses each weekday. That lay-by is where the Capitol Bike Share used to be. That bike share is now moved across the street somewhere, eliminating some public parking spaces or interfering with pedestrian movements. Okay, now we must choose whether to continue straight along the edge of the lay-by or to cut in close to the new building. If we go straight, we enter a loading aisle that's used by motorized pallet jacks and trash dumpsters. Our path may be blocked or worse yet, a trash truck may be dumping trash 10 feet above us just a few feet away. If we cut in close to the building, we must follow a serpentine route to avoid swinging doors and seat walls. NDC calls this route a public gathering space. According to their Josh Sloan on April 12th, parts of this area are to be privatized for dining by paying customers. Now proceeding along the front, we find ourselves on a raised terrace that covers the parking garage underneath. If we're using a stroller, wheelchair or walker, we must exit this terrace at the far east end of the property just before some stairs by making a 140-degree turn onto an ADA ramp four feet wide that descends toward the street. Delivery and trash movers will be using this same four-foot wide ramp. That ramp deposits us in a high conflict area with a crosswalk, bikes merging onto the sidewalk, trucks pulling out of the lay-by and pedestrians of varying ability moving in several directions or waiting to cross the street. Whether we cross at that crosswalk or turn right towards the co-op, we may feel a sense of relief as we get off the NDC site. I hope this short mental tour gives you a sense of the inconveniences and the safety issues that NDC has introduced by insisting on its lay-by design for deliveries. Setting aside the current legal challenges, please ask yourself whether NDC's plans and actions look like the product of a partner who sincerely wants to improve safety, access, convenience, use of alternate modes of transportation and the health of new and existing businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Karen Anderson is next.
Ms. Anderson hasn't joined us. Next would be Rick Weiss.
Great.
There's a story perhaps apocryphal about a time when the famous author and philosopher Isaac Becherba Singer was asked whether he believed in predestiny or free will. And his ironic reply was, I have no choice but to believe in free will. And city council, I'm here to implore you to display Singer's resolute sense of free will. This junction development is not predestined. It doesn't have to happen. You all have the freedom to start over and start fresh, not in defeat, but from a place of strength, standing tall and saying enough is enough. Standing tall for the green space we insisted on and were promised but didn't get, standing tall for the community gathering space we insisted on and were promised but didn't get, standing tall for the tree preservation we were promised but didn't get, standing tall for the extra parking spaces we were promised at first to support our junction shops and then the just enough spaces for the new building itself and then not even enough for that. Promises broken over and over, waiver after waiver. What about the promise of a safe and unobtrusive approach to the daily loading and unloading of food, freight and trash? They promised it, but all we actually got was this lousy, ugly, stinking, dangerous lay-by. Who here loves a lay-by? A Main Street lay-by smack in the middle of a crazy five-way intersection and school crossing? And now the promise that so many generously, perhaps naively chose to trust, the promise that NDC would keep its hands off the food co-op. Well, the mask is off NDC. This company's true colors are on display. If it wasn't clear before, we now know NDC is not our friend. Inch by inch, NDC has baited and switched, baited and switched, and this relationship has gone from promising to evasive to abusive. Mayor Kate and elected officials, you have every right, indeed at this point, a legal and moral responsibility to apply your free will and tell the neighborhood destruction company, we see what you did. Maybe this business strategy works for you in other places, but not here. We're done with you. There are so many locally compatible ways to transform this parking lot, this lot that we own. We can do so much better than this. Let's cut the cord and get on with the plan that works for all of us and that expresses our understanding of what it means to be a neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Laura Delaney.
Hi, everyone. I live on Davis Avenue in Ward 2. And I am 61 years old. I grew up on Hodges Lane. And I was on the very first collective of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Food Co-op when it was on Schlegel Avenue, along with Mark Elrich, our county executive. We opened our doors January 81. I also opened a vintage store, co-opened a vintage store called Tallulah's. So I'm telling you all this as a, as a way of saying I'm very invested in my home and in Tacoma Park and I was really looking forward to a process with this lot that was going to be creative and collaborative and collegial. And that's not what's happened. And I see more and more that NDC is not invested in a community space. That's, they're not invested like we are. And I'm extremely disappointed. You know, I haven't really been, you know, to these meetings very much. I haven't been one of the, you know, I didn't write out a long thing. I'm just appealing to your sense of community. And I'm appealing to the evidence that's saying they're not a community partner. And then I was really flabbergasted by the comments that there was, that was put out saying that there was no safe, that unloading was not being safely done at the co-op. And I'm wondering where the accountability piece is for that because my understanding is that there was a city employee put out information that was false. And I want to know what accountability has been for this city employee. And I want to know, it just reminds me of the previous administration where you can put out something that's false and all these people spend their time and energy proving that this lie isn't a lie. And I really resent that. I'd rather be in the position of working together and figuring out a way to use this space that's productive and creative and useful. And it's, the irony is that the complaint was, there was no safety in unloading where the lay-by, the State Highway Administration has said the lay-by is not safe. So I can't quite believe that that was the reason that information was put out. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
My husband, Lee Peterson, is here, I believe.
Oh, all right, Lee, yeah, we can, yeah.
We're on one computer.
Fine. I, I really don't have much to add other than it's real important, I feel as a community for us to sever our ties with NDC and move on to something that is really a community approach to support this area and is safely done. You know, we tried, we worked with NDC and it's turned out that this isn't an organization that's really going to be working to support our community. So I really support you all to make that decision and sever the contract and let's restart with the strength that we've learned from all this process and move forward with something new and creative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Susan Hoffman.
Hi. I thought I would be automatically put on, but I am Susan Huffman, living in Ward 3. And I just want to talk to you about my sense that I'm losing trust completely in, in this whole process. I attended the Zoom meeting a couple of weeks ago when we had breakout sessions and I attended the session where we were talking about public space. One of your council members was there and I asked Mr. Washington what, well, I asked the group actually, not Mr. Washington. I asked about what public space was being put aside. And Mr. Washington just jumped right in and said, the problem was the co-op, the lay-by was because of the co-op and anything was because, and I was shocked. I had no idea that he would have so much antipathy to, towards the co-op. And not only was that upsetting, it was upsetting when we got the state highway telling us that this whole thing wasn't safe when we already knew that. We all knew that it was so obviously not safe. And I'm upset that it wasn't obvious to everyone. It wasn't obvious to every, all of you that this whole thing was not safe, that the state highway had to tell us that. So I have concerns as we go on that this public space is becoming a private space and Mr. Washington, once he's in charge, can do whatever he likes with our public space. And I, I have no trust in what will happen in the future. So I'm begging you not to bend over backwards to accommodate NDC, but to find somebody else that we can all trust. I don't say they shouldn't be, there should be development. I agree with that, but I just think it should be safe and it should be with someone that we can all as Tacoma Parkians feel comfortable with. Thank you so much for letting me come on tonight to have my thing.
Thank you. Next is Sue Miller. Let me start, Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller, you're on mute. Jesse, do you want to start the three minutes again?
Sorry.
It's okay. We can start the, just go.
Sue Miller, Ward 3, good evening. We have come to a really difficult moment in the history of our city and it is time to let NDC go. They had six years to create a safe plan for us and there is no safe plan. They had six years to create the public space that you asked for, they refused. Instead, we have a plan that entirely privatizes our public land for the benefit of upscale retail and obsolete offices. Why? You asked them to support our community-owned grocery store and in this, they have failed in a most spectacular fashion. They struck a sudden and cruel and illegal blow to the heart of our community and now the co-op is forced to defend itself in court. The city is in crisis. For weeks, a wall of silence has divided the people from our government. It is time to let NDC go. This is not a crisis that can be solved by letting the co-op back onto the lot because all of us, a community of 10,000 co-op members and the families supported by the union workers there and the hundreds of small local businesses that sell their products there, all of us will be forever now looking over our shoulders, waiting for the next blow. I know you are reading the comments on your website and so you know that the overwhelming majority of 340 comments, a landslide of comments urged you to let NDC go. You know that people who supported this development for years until last month urge you to let NDC go. And you know that people who voted for you now urge you to let NDC go. This heartbreaking mess does not have to be your legacy. We can walk away. We can let NDC go. We must let NDC go. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tracy DeVal.
First, I'd like to thank the mayor for the proclamation of ME Day. I've suffered mightily from myalgic encephalomyelitis for more than a decade. In fact, we chose our house in Tacoma Park in part In fact, we chose our house in Tacoma Park in part so that I would have beautiful scenery to look at day after day, as I'm often confined at home. Because of the stigma and ignorant doubt surrounding ME, I usually don't tell people that I have it. Public proclamations like this mean a lot to me and other sufferers, because they help us to feel seen and accepted. So again, thank you. Next, I'd like to share my forecast of NDC's future behavior. I predict years of similar storms. Of course, I have consistently opposed NDC's current proposal. But since they began strong-arming the co-op, I now fear more than their announced plan. I fear that NDC will continue this pattern of ignoring verbal and even written commitments when it suits them. I fear that during construction, they will bully the co-op, neglect the interests of the existing businesses, destroy more of the woods, change the design of their building, endanger our houses with disruptive construction techniques, and more. After construction, they'll reserve parking spaces for their tenants. They'll ignore their assurances about not using the back of the building for events. The noise coming from the garage will be louder than they claimed. They'll allow their tenants to usurp the so-called public gathering space, and more. If you're tired of the current controversy, I have bad news for you. NDC is likely to continue making trouble. What's to stop them? What do they have to lose by being bad actors? Right now, you have maximum lead bridge. You can end the relationship. Yet NDC still acted outrageously toward the co-op. In fact, even before that, they essentially ignored your resolution twenty eighteen forty-one and dared you to enforce it. But if you're determined to continue the city's relationship with NDC, then what's the worst that they can suffer from the crises they manufacture? Right now, the worst for them is going back to the status quo. In the future, in many cases, the damage will already be done by the time the city can react. And it seems extremely unlikely that NDC will face any meaningful punishment, much less the threat of cancellation. NDC has shown that it can't be trusted to live up to its commitments, even ones in writing. Their approach has consistently been high-handed. Why would they stop once construction has begun and they have more leverage? Please protect the neighboring residents and businesses. Please save us all from years and possibly decades of drama and disappointment. Please drop NDC. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hubner, you're next.
Paul Hubner, Ward Three. In twenty fifteen, almost six years ago, the City Council selected a developer, NDC, as a partner to build a small-scale, two-story building, like the surrounding businesses, with loading and dumpsters in the rear, akin to the plans they submitted. Shortly thereafter, those plans changed dramatically to the abomination known as the lay-by, in order to use the entire area and maximize profits. Further encroaching on the public right-of-way and streetscape would allow increased maximization of profits. Well, that's all understandable within a profit-at-any-cost model that this developer is using. What I fail to understand is how the council can accept this profit-at-any-cost model from a private developer on public land bought with taxpayer dollars. Almost everyone wants some development at the junction. But this was never what the council promised the residents. And the developers continued to betray all the covenants, laws, regulations, and resolution that the council had in writing as to safety, affordable housing, public space, stormwater mitigation, protection of rear forested area, traffic and parking throughout the junction and all the nearby neighborhoods, as well as the original co-op expansion and protection. Now, aside from the co-op, what of all the other small businesses in the junction? They seemingly are composed of everything this council has espoused. Local, owned by people of different gender identities, multiracial, multiethnic, from multiple continents and countries, Asian, African, African-American, white, Korean, and Indian. There's an auto shop, a barber, a theatrical supply and party house, a vet, a dry cleaner, a laundromat, a business center, a baker, and a picture frame maker, as well as nearly fifty unionized employees with health benefits, and all in the junction, and all feeling threatened by the behemoth assembling across the street. Finally, there's the developer, who you would call partner, after he broke his lease agreement with the co-op and you. And then he had not even the courtesy or decency to reply to you. Well, as a former superintendent and project manager for developers, I can tell you this, this is as good as it gets with this guy. Once through the citizen advisory, approval, and regulatory processes, and he gets a permit, he will be unstoppable. He will abide by the mantra, better to apologize for a mistake than to ask for permission. And by then, it'll be too late to stop him. I urge you to learn from his actions, not his words. He is not an honorable partner, and his current plans are unbuildable. He has not and will not revise his plans from this megalith. He will only push harder to force you to accept his taking of public land for private profit. Do the right thing and drop NDC. Thank you very much. Oh, and thanks for holding the line the other night with the budget. I went through it, and I saw you guys struggling. But I think that that was very positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. Nadine Block is next.
Hello. Good evening, Nadine Block, Ward Three. Thank you for listening to me. Thank you, Councilmember Circe, Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Costiuk, Councilmember Dibala, Councilmember Kovar, and our mayor, Kate Stewart. Just thought I'd say your names. I know these can be pretty boring. So perhaps saying your names helps you to refocus. We've heard incredible testimony tonight. And I would like to add two points on accountability and responsibility. They're joined together by the understanding and the comments that we've had tonight around community safety. Community safety as far as the junction goes and transportation, and also my concern about the police department and the overall budget. So I know that there were some comments about the canine unit. And yes, it's true, you can't teach an old dog new tricks. But how about we retire the dog? And we do it now and not wait for the next round of chances to cut that budget. That's a commitment you can make. That's a commitment, along with a reduction of the police budget, that is being made nationally, across the US and across the world. In fact, people are recognizing that bloated police budgets do not make communities safer. So I'm asking politely, but it is really a remarkable moment in our history that I believe that you are responsible and accountable to communities that are, including ours, that are trying to enact more progressive budgets to reflect what we believe in. And I really want to know where your thinking is and your brain is and your heart is in this matter on the junction. It's pretty clear to me that you can, as another person mentioned, at this point, choose your legacy. You can choose to be the council that did nothing around this particular instance and invited a, what I would call a bully developer in. We have every indication that this is not going to be a good partner and a fair player. Your actions, in fact, are speaking so loudly. Despite your silence or because of your silence, we clearly are understanding that you're in support of this developer rather than the community and the businesses, particularly the co-op and the local businesses in the junction that are asking for your action to drop NDC. They're not a good player. They're not going to get better in the future when you have even less authority or capacity to control their actions. So thank you for the time, and I hope that we have some good information coming from you soon about a reduction of the police budget and a dropping of the NDC contract. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Rachel Hardwick.
Rachel Hardwick, Ward Two. As you know, I'm a former president of the board of the co-op. I was involved in the mediation with NDC, in which members of the City Council and staff observed. And I participated in that mediation in good faith, along with the team made up of other co-op board members, staff, and our outside counsel. It is shocking to see what NDC is doing, clearly behaving in bad faith as it willfully disregards its obligations to the co-op, to the city, and to the community. It is shocking that your tenant on the city-owned lot is treating its subtenant, the co-op, as it is, ending its lease with the co-op well before NDC is ready to begin construction. And this was not the city's intent. It is time to rein in your tenant on the lot that we, the city, and the residents own. I am not weighing in on the size or the design of the project, including the lay-by. I'm here just to comment on NDC's methods of doing business. NDC is bullying the co-op and not honoring its legal obligations. Why did we mediate our issues and come to agreement on a number of matters after weeks of negotiation if NDC is not going to honor its agreements and work with the community in good faith? NDC is showing us who it is. We've been warned. It would be very unwise to continue in a relationship with NDC for the next ninety-five-plus years. We've watched NDC break its promises over and over. And we've watched Adrian Washington charm his way through the process in his dealings with the city staff. Now, NDC is publicly bullying the co-op and publicly acting in bad faith. Even if we went with the same design, it shouldn't be built by or under the control of NDC. It is time to divorce NDC. We will be very sorry if we do not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Esther Segal.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to again present my plea before you. I continue to be perplexed by your deferential treatment towards NDC. Our words and pleas don't seem to penetrate. So maybe, Mayor Kate, two of your public comments just might. On June sixth, twenty twenty, in a statement on your website about community, in a statement on your website, you said, "From the time I joined the council until now, I have worked to ensure the co-op's needs are front and center." Let me say that again. "The needs of the co-op are front and center," in your words, "in our discussions and decision-making. I worked on the development agreements with others to ensure accommodations will be made for the co-op deliveries, trash, and recycling, and that their parking needs will be met." And then, on July twenty-third, in two thousand and eighteen, you wrote very touching and beautiful words. And you said, "A few months ago, I was asked, what does community mean to me? The first thing that popped into my mind, you said, was to respond with our geographic location, the city of Tacoma Park, two-point-four square miles located on the corner of Montgomery County, et cetera." Then you continued on, and you said, "But community is so much more. The word itself is rooted in the middle French communiqué. Initially, it meant joint ownership." And then you concluded, "Joint ownership, shared together, that is community." Please heed your own words. Thank you.
Thank you. Is he, Marcia's here already? Stickel, you're up next.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, Marcy, Stickel, and George France. Thank you. Our co-op forevermore. We speak again in solidarity with our beloved co-op, serving all in myriad ways. Listen to co-op president Diane Karan's excellent clarifying interview with Eric Bond of W O W D, posted on Community Vision Tacoma Park's Facebook page. Read co-op treasurer Adam Frank's wonderful, enlightening How the Co-op Ended Up at Tacoma Junction, TPS S's fortieth anniversary reflections on a co-op superb webpage. We share a few co-op-related quotes from our Tacoma Park mayor, Kate Stewart. We would like to think with hope of these quotes concerning survivability and survivability of the co-op as promises, July twenty-nine, twenty twenty. As I have noted previously, I strongly support the co-op and continue to do so throughout this process. I have been in regular contact with Mike Houston, the general manager, throughout the COVID-nineteen crisis and agree on the importance of the co-op to our community. In addition, as outlined in the development agreement with NDC, we can also decide to end the project and no financial cost to the city if we feel it is not meeting the needs of the city or does not fulfill the resolution we passed in July twenty-eighteen, July one, twenty twenty. I agree, we need to be taking a good look at the projects and plans for the future. I have in the past and continue to fully support the co-op. It has shown especially at this time how it is important to our community. And under the terms of development agreement between the city and Neighborhood Development Company, the city can end the project at any point, July eighteen, twenty eighteen. If at any time the council does not believe the proposed accommodations are reasonable, it can require changes. If the changes are not made and discussions between the city and NDC are unsuccessful, the project can be terminated with no penalties to the city. Our co-op is the horn of plenty and goodness and serving all. We stand in solidarity with the co-op. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Julie. Is Julie with us?
Yep. No, but it still was big. It was still big if we went. It's just how we.
Julie, I think you're on mute. Sorry, that, there you go. We can hear you now.
Great. Julie Bodie wore one, wore the one. Uh-oh. And the nuclear free committee. I want to encourage the council, just as warmly as I can, to listen very well to the thoughtful arguments of its constituents and then to discontinue its relationship with that shady developer, NDC. You know, the quality of NDC service is so very visible in the building that once housed the Seven-Eleven on Cedar. Agreed to that. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next, Dennis Hoffman.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, and thanks for this opportunity to speak. My name is Dennis Hoffman, and I live at Nine Montgomery Avenue in Ward Three. The Quaker sociologist and educator Parker Palmer tells us about the challenges of integrating soul and role. He writes about wholeness and the importance of showing up with our hearts. I mention this because sometimes it feels as though there's a secret city ordinance that requires council members to leave their hearts at the door when the junction is on the agenda. Thank goodness that's not the case, because we've come to a point where talking about sightlines and the number of square feet allocated to this and that is just not enough. I don't presume to know what is in your hearts. I only ask that you remember your hearts. Stop and listen to your hearts when you consider this project. Ask yourselves from the bottom of your hearts if what is before you is what you had hoped for. Ask yourselves if this is the plan that made your heart sing when the visioning process for the future of the junction began. If your heart skip a beat when you think about tomorrow's schoolchildren crossing the street at the future junction envisioned in these plans, ask yourselves what that means. How does your heart feel about NDC's recent stance toward the co-op? And how does that bode for the future? Finally, ask yourselves what you love about today's Tacoma Park and whether, in your hearts, you believe implementing this plan will leave you deeper in love. Then, of course, you should follow your hearts. My heart tells me we deserve a better project than NDC is prepared to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? I'm asking the city clerk. I think we had a couple of other people who did not show up.
No, yeah, we've had, everyone who was here has spoken.
Great. All right, then we will go to council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilman Kostick.
Thank you. I just want to thank all the public commentators for coming out tonight. I just have a couple of items that are happening in May. There's a lot related to transportation. So I just kind of wanted to call out everything that's going on this month. There's a lot of big, big kind of national days and weeks in May. So May tenth through the fourteenth is Infrastructure Week, which is related to transportation, but also stormwater and many other things. And that's a good time to advocate at the national level in terms of what we need here. And I know NLC, National League of Cities, has been asking for some information on that and doing some work related to that. And I know NLC, National League of Cities, has been asking for some information on that and doing some work related to that. May seventeenth through the twenty-third is also the UN Global Road Safety Week, and there's some very interesting information that the UN has put out about kind of worldwide ways to improve road safety and emphasize pedestrian safety in particular. May twenty-first is Bike to Work Day, which you can participate in even if you are not actually biking very far, if you're working from home. There are still chances around the region to bike and share information about how important that is and to take take some action on that day. And then, finally, there's also a federal rule change that is happening on the MUTCD, the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is sort of the standard that is used in transportation planning. And sets rules or guidelines that are used across the US on things like how speed limits are set, where crosswalks can go and kind of those regulations. So there's an opportunity to comment on the federal rule through May fourteenth. And if anyone's interested, I'm happy to share some more information about how you can do that. I just submitted a comment earlier and it's a good opportunity to just kind of share some thoughts on how you might like to see that changed. One of the things that happens across the country in terms of how speed limits are set, for example, is that regularly jurisdictions look at kind of the eighty-fifth percentile of how fast cars are going and then make a determination of how the speed limit should be set based on that. And as we know, how fast the cars are going may not actually be how fast the car should be going. So that's just an example of some of the things that could be improved in the MUTCD. So I just kind of wanted to call out all of those things happening. And there's lots of other things going on this month. I just wanted to call attention to those. Thank you all.
Great. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Councilman Deva.
Yes, thank you. So first, thanks to all the residents of Ward Two who spoke tonight or wrote comments into the city council or contacted me over the past couple of weeks about the budget and about the co-op situation. I wanted to just remind people who live on Colby Avenue that tomorrow at five-thirty, Mayor and I and the Director of Public Works will be in the playground to talk about possible options for playground equipment. So if you're, it's supposed to be beautiful and we'd love to see you. I wanted also to mention that this week is the Montgomery County Energy Summit and there's a lot of discussion about buildings, about efficiency, about building rules and commissioning, which is something that we're having done for the library. And it's been a very interesting few days. And that's it for me. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Smith.
I have a couple of prepared remarks. I just wanted to circle back on the budget discussion from Monday. I am glad that we are moving forward on the Ambassador Navigator Program. It was a pledge that I made back in November and I'm glad that we are moving forward with it. It's a way to seal the cracks that too many of our residents filed through. In addition to this program, I hope that we can consider as a council a social services committee that would include people, subject matter experts and SNAP, affordable housing vouchers and a couple of people from crisis services. The specialists can then help the ambassadors, navigators, navigate the treacherous and complicated waters to get the services that many of our residents desperately need. And it will also augment our housing department since we only really have two people that have to help all the residents, whether you live in a multifamily or single-family home in this city. I just want to thank my colleagues for supporting this and I look forward to talking about it more in the next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a few things I wanted to mention. One, I've talked in previous meetings about some of the organizations that are helping out with food insecurity. And there's one that I think a number of people are familiar with called Small Things Matter and they have weekly and actually more frequently than weekly food drives and food packing and sometimes other supplies as well for those who need the assistance. And I just wanted to make note of the fact that the local Channel Seven News had a nice little couple-minute piece on them on April twenty-third. And Small Things Matter is also doing a GoFundMe effort. And I'll send the information around in my weekly report, but if you go to the GoFundMe site and you can find them through Small Things Matter. So it's an organization very much well worth supporting. I think I recommend folks to take a look at that. And I will, as I say, send around a link to the Channel Seven report as well. I had mentioned in the last week's meeting that a concern had come up about Montgomery College and the trucks on the construction site and whether they would have to deviate from the earlier plans and instead of staying on Fenton Street where nobody lives to periodically go on Tacoma Avenue and New York Avenue. We had a, there was a public forum where we met with Montgomery College and representatives of their construction company last night and they announced that they have figured out a way to do what they need to do even with the larger trucks without having to go on to Tacoma Avenue or New York Avenue. So that's back to where it was before and that will continue. So that was positive news. Two other things, I'm going to do another office hours next week on Wednesday, May twelfth from noon to two, and I'm going to just try sitting outside in the public area of the Laurel Avenue streetery, the part, the end down closer to the district line near to the post office. And the last time I did it, the wind was so strong that I ended up having to sit somewhere different and a few people missed me. So hopefully the wind will be lighter and I'll be there. But if the weather's bad, just look around. I'll try to be there somewhere. And I did just want to mention, Councilmember Smith mentioned briefly the budget, one of the items in the budget and one of the commenters did also. And I'll send out information on this as well. We'll be voting on the budget formally on the twelfth and the nineteenth at our meetings next week and the week after. But on Monday of this week, we did have the what's called the reconciliation process where we take the city manager's recommended budget and make a range of changes. And I'm pleased that we were able to keep the property tax rate right where it is now. That'll be the third straight year. It's been at the same level. And since we're not yet into the reassessment cycle until the following fiscal year, I think that's a pretty good result. I had hoped that there might be an opportunity to push it down a little bit lower than keeping it at the same rate, but that's not where we ended up. And I'm not going to lie. I voted for cuts and increases that helped it end up there. So it's not as if it happened without me, but I think we cut about over eight hundred thousand from the budget and then we added back some things in particular. A few things I thought were really important like stormwater funding and some funds to move forward on racial equity, not to mention the Navigator Ambassador Program that Councilmember Smith mentioned. So I think it ended up okay. I'm mindful that because some people will face higher stormwater fees. It's not a perfect result, but I think it's all told on balance, a good result and appreciate all the work that my colleagues and the staff did for that. Again, I'll send out more information and there'll be, there's still two more votes and several more weeks before it's final, but I just wanted to briefly note all of that. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Great. Next, Councilman Circe.
Hey, good evening, everyone. First, I want to say, please, please vote on the Hillwood Manor Playground Design Options. This has been a long time coming and the designs look so good. It's going to be hard to pick, but you have until the end of the month, so May the thirty-first to vote. And there are two options. So definitely, they're also encouraging, if you have little ones, to please vote in consultation with your children. So have them take a look at the designs and have them weigh in as well. Also, I want to remind folks about the Crossroads Farmers Market. Had an opportunity today to grab some much-needed veggies as well as lunch, papusas and churros. I mean, I don't know how my dieting is going to work with the Crossroads Farmers Market. I just don't think it's going to, I don't think it's going to work. So definitely want to encourage folks to go out on Wednesdays. There are some awesome, awesome vendors. I also want to echo my colleague's sentiments on the budget. We had an opportunity to meet with the Public Safety Task Force last night. And I know that we talked at length during reconciliation. It feels like ages ago, but that was just on Monday about the K-9 unit and what are some of the implications. And I explicitly asked for members of the Public Safety Task Force to listen to that section of the budget discussion with an eye for how can we start to think about and tackle, because K-9 is on their list as well, some of the policy aspects of the elimination of our K-9 unit and what that might mean and what suggestions they may have. So definitely wanted to share that thought. And trying to think of what else. Appreciate that we were able to keep the budget and the tax rate the same. That's been something I openly told members of Ward Six that that was my goal. So I appreciate working with all of you all to keep that goal alive. Well, and I think, think, that's it. I think that's what I have. Oh, one thing I do say, last night, Purple Line Now had a meeting with the head of the Department of Transportation, Lee Greg Slater, as well as Mike, all of the Purple Line folks, Mike Pollak. And so one of the things that was discussed and was brought up was delegate Charcutian's tree aspect. And what does that mean? And I will say, one of the things that they did bring up was it's not about paying for the trees as much as it's about identifying the space. So it will be a long road ahead. I'm happy we have our new arborist as we try to think about ways in which we may be able to partner with some of the private property owners along University Boulevard to enable us to create the necessary space for tree replanting. I think that's going to be the challenging piece and I do believe that that was something that MDOT and Purple Line folks definitely mentioned last night. And I think that's all I have. Thank you all so much.
Great. Councilman Kostick.
Yeah, thanks. That's the problem with going first. You remember things you were going to say. So I mentioned all of the transportation things going on this month, but I forgot to mention that this week is Public Service Recognition Week. So I just want to say thank you to all the hardworking city staff. I know it's been a really tough year. And I just really appreciate all the work and dedication that you all put in.
Thanks. That's everyone. Right? Yep. Okay. Let's see, where's my list? So last week, Tacoma Park was in the Harvard Political Review talking about sixteen and seventeen-year-old voting, which was very nice. It is a nice piece. Those should look at. Saturday was a busy day in Tacoma Park. Food distribution in the morning with the Shepherds of Zion Church. I saw the city manager there and Councilmember Kovar. They'll be there again, not this Saturday, but the following Saturday. And then, thanks to Delegate Charcutian and Safeway and a number of other Impact Silver Spring and a number of other local partners, we were able to do the second of the second shot vaccine clinic on Washington Avenue University's campus. That went very well. Is out there volunteering for a while and hopefully we'll be able to do more of those. And let's see, this Sunday, native plants. So on Mother's Day, if you're out and about in the city, swing by the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church on Tulip Avenue between one and three. They have native plants that they will be giving out. This is a project of the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church, the National Wildlife Federation, Friends of Sligo Creek, the Interfaith Power and Light and Interfaith Partners of the Chesapeake and others. So they have two hundred and fifty native plants that they will be giving away and also have information and other things. So swing by there. And yesterday, as I mentioned before, I chaired a group of Montgomery County mayors. And yesterday afternoon, for our monthly meeting, we had Montgomery County mayors, Prince George's mayors and Congressman Anthony Brown and Council President Tom Hucker to come talk to us particularly about Councilwoman Kostick, you would like this, transportation issues, particularly Hogan's plan to widen four ninety-five. Both Councilmember Hucker and Congressman Brown have been spoken out against that project and called for much better thinking about our transportation needs in our community. So we're thankful to to hear from the congressman about that and other work that he's doing. And then finally, talking about Appreciation Week, I just want to do a huge shout out to our city manager for her excellent presentation at the Government Operations County Committee last week on tax duplication. So I think it went really well. We have, and I know she'll speak to this, it has for anyone who wants more information, a lot in her city manager comments, but we really need to thank the Chair of the Go Committee, County Councilwoman Nancy Navarro, who proposed, you know, hopefully it will move forward and the city manager will talk more about this, but I think something that gets us so much closer on tax duplication than we have ever been before. And then Councilmember Fritzen and Katz went along with Nancy Navarro's proposal. So now we just got to make sure that County Council President Tom Hucker puts it on the reconciliation and we get the full council to vote for it. But I just want to thank again the city manager. There's been a lot going on in the city and moving this forward has been really important. And just do a huge shout out to the residents. I know I've been hearing from a number of residents and from county council members that this is the, this, they have never heard from residents as much as they're hearing this year about tax duplication and how much better educated they are about it. Because the residents have really, you know, dug in deep on this one. And so I just want to say thank you. We're not quite to the finish line, but we're getting close. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you very much. Yes, it's a big deal. I do have a number of city manager comments and I will put some time in on taxation in just a moment. I first want to just urge people to get vaccinated. Huge push nationwide to get over that line, get the shots in the arms. And we have real opportunities also now, starting, I think, perhaps next week for even twelve-year-olds and over to get shots. We need to get vaccinated. And I came up with a a little phrase that I've been thinking about, which is V is for vaccinations and voting, which are two important items, two important civic duties. You can register to vote at any time, so why not take care of both very soon? So think of, get the vaccinations going, folks. We will have COVID testing this week on Saturday at the Rex Center. Montgomery County is recommending testing about once a month for people. So just kind of think about that as a regular thing to put into your schedule. So now on tax duplication, as the mayor mentioned, there was a huge push by Montgomery County municipal leaders, including a number of our council members. And the residents were awesome. Really have to give a shout out to Tacoma Park residents for putting a lot of pressure on the council members at the county council. Because of all this, the Government Operations Committee recommended last Friday that the municipalities get the tax rebate amount that they had been requesting for FY twenty-two and put the processes in place so that things are right from FY twenty-three going forward. This is a tremendous win, but it's only a recommendation to the full county council. So we need to get the full county council to approve the Government Operations Committee recommendation. So we need to get the full county council to approve the government operations committee recommendation. And then the council president, Tom Hucker, needs to put that five million dollars in the budget. If that five million dollars full amount gets into the reconciliation budget, it would be divided among the county municipalities. Uh, to city of Tacoma Park would receive an additional about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, it's really important to get that done. Um, then what's the plan for FY twenty-three and following? The next important step is for the municipalities to negotiate a police rebate that is of up to date uh, formula and that not only applies to Tacoma Park, but also to the three other municipalities that have, uh, police departments, which are Gaithersburg, Rockville and Chevy Chase Village. Um, that would put formulas in place for, um, FY twenty-three going forward. And there's also park maintenance, um, formula that needs to be, uh, developed, although it, it mostly just needs to be adopted by the county. So what can you do to ensure that this tax duplication issue that I've worked on since nineteen ninety-eight actually moves forward? Please contact, first of all, say thank you to Chair Nancy Navarro, to council member Andrew Friedson and Sydney Katz. Let them know that you appreciate them taking the step. Nancy Navarro actually put the money on the table. That has not happened before and we need to thank her for that step. Then all the other county council members, let them know they need to approve the government operations recommendation. We don't know what date that will come before the full county council, but it sounds like it's sometime next week. And then, um, council president, Tom Hucker, when he works to compile all the reconciliation items into that final uh, document, needs to put the full five million dollars on the, on the budget. And so please, one of the things I put in my notes, yes, you can send an email, but tag them on social media. I mean, this is what they start to pay attention to. And for, for council president, Tom Hucker, I see him at the fish store. I see him at the streetery. You see them, just say hi, just say, hey, we're waiting for that five million dollar, uh, addition, uh, for tax duplication. Uh, that's what they pay attention to and this is the year to do it. So, um, again, thanks. I'm, I'm getting to know a number of our residents really well on this issue. I appreciate their help so much.
Um, Suzanne, could I ask one question about that?
Yes.
So just timing wise, if folks want to weigh in, as you suggested, to, to thank the three who did it definitely, but also to, to contact the others. When, can you just say when you think the next decision points are so they understand the?
It's sometime next week. So, so by Monday, get that, get that, um, push on. Um, they haven't defined the date. When we find out what that date is, we'll let people know. But it would be anywhere from next Monday to the following Monday. And then, uh, and then not long after that, there'll be a final reconciliation vote. So.
That will, that will happen after we've essentially finalized.
Yes.
Our budgets.
Yeah, I would not count on anything, you know, for our budget. But it's, uh, it's really important to get it done this year because it's not gonna happen next year. They'll be in a whole different mode next year. Um, besides tax duplication, um, just, I wanted just to give people a reminder to sign up for the Tacoma Insider for, uh, a lot of the news information. And as, uh, Councilmember Kostic mentioned, things in May, we also have a lot of things coming up in June. Um, we've got Pride, you know, they're, we're gonna have some rainbow painted crosswalks in all Tacoma. You've got the Summer Mercado that we'll be just talking about in a few minutes. Uh, the artery art sale classes and camps. Um, so please sign up for the insider and, and keep up on that information. The Arts and Humanities Committee usually comes to the council to give an annual update or wants to do that. Um, this year with all this going on, they're sending you their report. Uh, so I've got it attached to the, uh, to my city manager comments, but, uh, it does show the great work that artists have been doing even during the pandemic and we really appreciate them. We are looking forward to seeing things together in the coming year. But, um, their Arts and Humanities report for twenty twenty, um, is available for you to review. I wanted to note, we've been doing, um, assistance for people on tax preparation. And the AARP Tax Aid Program, um, with the assisting person Kathleen Thomas, prepared eighty-seven tax returns, uh, this year for eighty-four people. So really a very useful service for free tax help in a tough year, uh, done safely. So I'm so glad the city was able to partner with the AARP Tax Aid Program. Um, on other good news, um, we've got progress on our affordable home ownership, um, uh, projects. Um, on the three twenty Lincoln Avenue property, we've closed, uh, last Friday on that, uh, with the Housing Initiative Partnership, so that it may be renovated into a sustainable and affordable home for an eligible purchaser. So excited that that tangibly moving forward. And I'm throwing out a special thanks to Jay Keller, uh, who has been mowing the grass there as we've been gone through a transition period because there was, uh, until, until the right people got it, it needed a little help. So appreciate him and shout to our neighbors in the community for, um, keeping everything looking good. I'm also happy to note that Habitat for He- oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember DeBala. Did you have a question on that?
Um, I, I guess you're gonna continue to talk about the project. So, so maybe you will say, when can people sign up to volunteer to help with the construction? Because I've had a bunch of people in Word two ask me that question.
I don't, I don't know.
I can deliver the answer.
Oh, the mayor knows the answer. I'm sorry.
Ms. Wiggins has already put together an Excel spreadsheet, so you should talk to her. There is already a, a spreadsheet that she is keeping because I have the same question and we've already started putting people's names on it. So.
Okay, I'll let people know.
Habitat for Humanity House.
Everything froze there, so I didn't hear the question. What was the question?
Oh, for volunteers for the Habitat for Humanity House, people have, have, yeah, have been. Yeah.
That's terrific. So for that Garland Avenue duplex, um, I just wanted to note that there have been seventy-two applications submitted to be the owners of the, those two units. Um, twenty-five of those were from Tacoma Park and I've got the breakdown by wards here about, um, who applied. The reviewing committee for Habitat will be, um, considering eighteen of the seventy-two applications, nine are from Tacoma Park. Um, so we will see who gets it. Uh, apparently they pick one for each and have a backup for each of the two units. Um, and, uh, they make that decision in June. Uh, it clearly shows a strong demand for this housing and we wish everyone best of luck. Uh, because it will be a wonderful project. So it's nice that the neighborhood's interested also in helping out and, and we're excited about that. Um, on a sad note, I wanted to note that, uh, Philip Sardellis, who's the owner of Sardi's Restaurant Chain, um, had passed away from COVID a few days ago. Um, today was their memorial service and all the Sardi's restaurants were closed today, uh, in his honor. Um, I just want to note that, first of all, I like Sardi's. Just as a, as a, as a neighborhood restaurant, uh, on University Boulevard. Um, but we express our, uh, deep sympathies to the family, friends and the employees of Sardi's and, and, uh, Mr. Sardellis. So just wanted to note that. And on a final note, um, I just wanted to also give a congratulations to the people who have graduated from community, our Community Police Academy, um, over in twenty twenty and in twenty twenty-one. We normally have a dinner with a kind of a little awards thing, um, obviously with the pandemic, that didn't happen. So I wanted to note the graduates of the, of the program, um, in twenty twenty. And also the note that the twenty twenty-one academy was done virtually, but it's shorter. Whether the people were in the twenty twenty academy or in the twenty twenty-one academy, they will be eligible to sit in on future academies for, uh, some of the courses that they missed and some of the field trips that they missed. So we're making sure that they get everything they want to learn out of the, out of that program. And I also want to send a special thank to Kathy Levy and Ron Hardy of our police department for doing the pivot during the pandemic about how to run the program and how to turn it into a, a virtual program. So thank you. Um, I'm not gonna read all the names, but they will be printed out and, uh, really thrilled that, that we could have so many residents in this popular program. I think that's all mine. Are there any questions for me?
Great. All right.
So tax duplication, everybody take your time, get the thank you notes and the, and the lobbying in.
Great. And then that, the information will be up on the website later.
That's right.
We can also get it out through social media. So, cool. Awesome. Um, because they do, because our county council does pay attention to social media as our city manager well knows. All right, let's.
Be prepared if, if they think they're getting called out, they'll, they'll respond.
They don't like it. All right, uh, voting session. We have a consent agenda this evening with three items on it that we had our work sessions on last week. Would someone like to move the consent agenda? Councilmember Siemens moved, councilmember Cersei second, uh, because there, uh, we'll call the vote. Will the city clerk call the vote on that?
Yes, uh, councilmember Kovar.
Hi.
Councilmember DeBala. Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Hi.
Councilmember Smith. And, uh, councilmembers, oh, good, councilmember Cersei.
Hi.
Mayor Stewart.
Yes. All right, now we'll move on to our work session. The first item, uh, we heard about during public comments tonight is, uh, a resolution authorizing the temporary closure of Anne Street, uh, for the Tacoma Langley CDA Summer Mercado on June twenty-sixth, excuse me, that I misspoke earlier. It is on June twenty-sixth. And, uh, they will be holding this on that Saturday from twelve to five P M. And, uh, the CDA is requesting the closure of Anne Street from seven A M. to seven P M. to set up and clean up. As we heard this evening, they have applied and received a letter of approval from Montgomery County Department of Health for the event and will be abiding by all the, um, protocol, uh, coded nineteen protocols. Um, and if anyone has any questions on this or other than yay, looking forward to it. But this will come back and we will vote on it, uh, next week. So just mark your calendars for that. Um, the next items, we have two, uh, procurement items tonight. The first is a photocopier lease and then a building access control system. Uh, I think, am I turning this over to the city manager?
Actually, uh, to, uh, Mr. Lars DiSalio for, uh, explanation of the two items.
Great.
Yeah, good evening. Uh, the photocopiers, uh, we use a thirty-nine month lease, uh, with Canon. Uh, and that, uh, lease is up and we want to continue. We've, uh, spoken with the senior leadership team and we didn't feel that it was, uh, worth switching vendors, especially during COVID, uh, trying to learn how to use new photocopiers. So for the last, uh, three or four months, actually, we've been negotiating with Canon, realizing that during a pandemic that we don't do as much copying. So, uh, you'll notice that the lease amount, uh, has gone down, uh, significantly. And that is to account for not making as many photocopies during this time. The, uh, copying costs are pretty much the same. Uh, but one of the things that I was able to put into the contract is that the, that we will not exceed the, uh, pre-COVID, uh, cost for the lease. So we will be paying less to start with and that amount will go up, but not to exceed, uh, our previous expenditures. So, um, that's pretty much for the, the Canon photocopier.
Uh, so on this one, it's also, um, you're using the, a special, um, program to per- the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance contract, right?
Correct. It's the same contract that we've used in the past and, uh, we're continuing on that. Same, uh, same type of photocopiers, uh, same number of copiers. Uh, speed is a little bit reduced. That was one way to get the cost down. But it's not significant enough that staff would, uh, recognize that. So that's the photocopier and then the access control system, uh, takes some, a little bit of explaining. That's basically the, uh, system that secures the doors, elevators, gates at Public Works and the floors. Uh, each floor has to be managed also as a device so that elevators do not go to specific floors during, uh, during hours that they shouldn't go there. So the idea here is that we have an outdated premise based system, which means basically we have a very old server that's sitting in our server room. And we will be getting rid of that and we will be replacing the controllers. The controllers for the system are what connect all of those devices that I mentioned, doors, elevators, floors and, and gates. And that will be controlled, uh, through a cloud-based system that allows, uh, city management to lock and unlock doors, uh, over the internet via, uh, cellphone. And that's what provides the security for the ci- for the city. So that's a basic, uh, basic overview of that system. So if anybody has any questions, be happy to answer them.
And the, we had budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars for that, um, but this price is much lower. Could you explain that?
Yeah, with the, we are replacing the controllers and that's, uh, just under, comes in just under fifty thousand dollars. But we'll have several engagements with, uh, uh, vendor to come in and do the installation at the different locations. So that's why, that's why this is just for the controllers. We will be reusing the mag locks, the strikes, the wiring and the keypads that you see in front of each one of the doors. So.
Any questions or anything? This will come back to us as voting items next week. All right. Thank you, Lars. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
All right. Next is on our work session. I am turning it over now to Councilman DeBala, Kostic and Cersei. I think we should like have a name for your subcommittee. To continue the conversation on committees.
So, um, as has been the case, there were three of us to split up the slides and councilmember Cersei is gonna do the mechanical steering, I think, of the slides. Um, so we, uh, just to, while we're getting the slides up, several of them are gonna look an awful lot like the ones you've seen before. So I can just start with that. We've, we've been through this process of trying to strengthen and improve the committee system. Um, we've, we've looked as a group at all of the quasi judicial and regulatory committees and we are now starting on the standing committees. Um, there we go. Uh, so next slide, please. So tonight we were hoping to, uh, just recap, uh, the general purposes and of committees, the factors that we all agreed on uh, for prioritizing the need for specific standing committees. Um, we wanted to review and discuss three of them. Um, and, um, we had hoped to hear about the code of conduct reporting process. Uh, that'll be next week instead and next week we'll also hear progress on some of the other administrative recommendations. And I think the next slide is the layout, yeah, here we go, of, of where we're going with all this. So, um, we're moving, we're trying to wrap up that first list and we're moving toward that second list. Um, and, uh, so tonight, again, looking at the purpose and charge of a couple of particular standing committees. Next slide, please. Um, so to refresh, uh, we had all talked about wanting these four kinds of things out of a standing committee um, to provide us, the council, with tangible recommendations and policy area to leverage both the technical expertise and the lived experiences of our many different types of red- residents to inform our decisions to ensure that the council has regular and timely information for the decisions we need to make. Um, and to create an opportunity to engage residents on air, in areas that they, that are relevant to their lives and also to set up a, a, almost a two-way street to engage in community education and, um, issues in a priority area. Uh, next slide, please. And so we had picked, um, as a group, we had picked these, these several factors for trying to prioritize amongst the many possibilities for trying to prioritize amongst the many possibilities, uh, for committees and to look at the ones that we have now. Um, just a reminder, there are seventeen, seventeen's a lot to keep track of. Um, so work that supports a council priority or continuing regulatory purpose. I'm interested, that's an issue that's well addressed by a standing committee, a regular group of people focusing on a topic as opposed to any of the many other ways that you can, um, promote community engagement on topic. S, ongoing attention that's needed on an issue, not a chess force that has a mission, that they do it, they're done. Very important, particularly for tonight's discussion, staff capacity to support the committee. Um, and, uh, and, and what the committee does, does or does not do to help the staff. Um, need for technical expertise and or lived experience to inform the issue. Um, an issue that is relevant to today's residents and important to them and whether there is some other existing entity, public or private, that can do all or part of the work. Uh, next and last slide for me. Um, so just to re- remind us that we had been through the eight quasi judicial regulatory groups, we had made some recommendations to you and we'd all, uh, agreed to, to look at how, what this looks like in code. So the five groups that, that we all discussed, um, to retain essentially as is um, with some changes to membership and structure, Board of Elections, Commission on Landlord Tenant Affairs, Ethics Commission, Police Pension Board, Pre-Commission. Um, and we looked at discontinuing one group because, um, there are better ways to get that work done, the Personnel Appeals Board and to reconsider how two other groups interact with other priorities that we have, the Fasada Advisory Board and in this broader public safety context, the Noise Control Board. And we had, um, looked at adopting a common structure, as I said, so, um, for the um, there are two more sections of slides, one is specifically about the, the committees that we want to talk about tonight and the last little bit is, um, to share some of our thoughts about what we've learned from the committees, because now we've talked to so many, uh, about what the role of the council ought to be, so y'all can start thinking about that part and, um, uh, Casey and Talisha, um, go ahead, um. Casey, I guess, would be a good person to talk to us about the standing committees and the three we want to talk about tonight.
Sounds good, our level of coordinatedness has decreased slightly as the work sessions have gone on.
Oh yes, but the slides are still beautiful.
They are, yes, they are, and a big thank you to councilmember Dibala for putting these together. Um, so just, um, a recap on the current standing committees that we have that are not part of that quasi judicial or regulatory group, those are the Arts and Humanities Commission, the Commemoration Commission, the Complete Safe Streets Committee, the Committee on the Environment, Emergency Preparedness Committee, Grants Review Committee, Nuclear Free Committee, Recreation Committee and the Youth Council. So what we, as a small group, councilmember Cersei, Dibala and I have been doing is reviewing these committees and, um, considering them against those factors that councilmember Dibala mentioned earlier. We have been consulting with staff members who work directly with each committee and with individual members of the committees and we've been considering, um, the membership and structure as they currently exist, as well as, um, whether there might be changes we would want to make to that. Next slide please. Um, and then here is a list of the three committees that we wanted to talk about tonight. Uh, the first of those is the Grants Review Committee and as you'll see on this chart here, the purpose for the Grants Review Committee is to evaluate grant applications and make recommendations on awards. So, um, this committee is one that, um, we have found, um, to have a very distinct purpose and, and role and a very clear um, sense of what they're working on and a pretty strong connection with staff as well as, um, uh, compared with the other committees, um, a stronger committee, connection to the council as well, um, because they do come and, and present before us. Um, and so, um, we are recommending that this is a committee that we maintain uh, pretty much in a similar role to how it exists right now. And, uh, some key issues for post appointments, uh, so after, um, we go through and appoint new members, um, at the end of June uh, in this case is to share best practices of the committee and staff. Um, and then, uh, next up is the Recreation Committee, which advises on recreation needs, programs and facilities and addresses a range of community needs, including recreation, health, leisure, education, enrichment programs and opportunities for social development. Um, and so again, we're recommending more or less, um, maintaining kind of a similar, um, a similar structure with this committee um, to, to what we've had, but also considering some other things, so there are some key issues for post appointment here. Um, uh, considering strengthening the focus and community engagement and other community needs and consider name, a name revision to add community engage and community engagement to, um, the committee name. Um, I'm gonna kind of brush over those a little bit and, and let, um, councilmembers Dibala and Cersei kind of go more in depth on those if you want to, um, because those are ones that they specifically worked on. Um, I have looked a little more closely at, um, the Emergency Preparedness Committee and so that's the last one on this list here, um, the purpose there is to input and assist with emergency operations and planning and preparation and involve residents in emergency prep. And this is one where I think we went into looking at, um, their role and not at least for myself, um, not necessarily understanding fully, um, what the committee's role was and how active they were and through the process, um, have really gotten a sense of how, um, hands-on they are in terms of, um, working with, um, with staff and reviewing the emergency preparedness plan that the city has and, and they also seem to have a very, um, clear mandate in terms of their role and what they, the, um, what their role is and what is expected of them. Um, so some key issues that we're recommending for post appointment with the, um, EPC is to consider simplifying their membership structure, um, right now they have, um, kind of an unusual structure, um, compared to some of the other committees in that they have, I believe it is seven, um, resident members, but, but then they also have a number of institutional members like the, um, Fire Department and, um, Montgomery College, Washington Adventist University, a number of other institutions within the city. And then there are also an additional sort of open five slots that do not seem to have been filled any time, um, recently, but are sort of just a general um, you know, someone could be appointed to this spot, um, i- if needed. So that's something we want to look at a little bit more and, and make some recommendations on shifting. Um, and then making some minor updates as recommended by the staff and committee, um, in terms of code clarifications. Um, and the, the committee has sent us some of their thoughts on what may be helpful there, um, but nothing super substantive in terms of what might be changed. Um, so for all of these, um, we are, suggest asking the committees to review their purpose, duties and, and responsibilities in code and apply um, a- and applying that to common structure and limits that councilmember Dibala mentioned earlier. Um, is there anything that you want to add, councilmember Dibala or Cersei to, um, particularly for those first two committees?
So, one thing that we did, um, in conversations about the REC committee realized that the REC committee actually has a bit of a broader purpose. Um, and I know that we've talked quite a bit about aspects of um, health or food insecurity, social service. And so I, I personally did not realize, um, that the REC committee had of its four purposes, two of them related to this broader aspect of overall community needs and engagement in a way, um, and so, you know, we had some great conversations with members of the REC, but also, um, uh, Greg and, and Debbie about, you know, how to figure out a way if council um, agreed with kind of broadening the scope a little bit, um, how that would work. Um, I think it also relate to what we'll talk about next, which is the council role and council engagement, um, but this was one area, at least for me, that was a little surprising because I see rec, I think basketball, rec center, like activity, like those types of physical activity programs um, and not quite realizing that the REC committees serves a, a broader purpose than that. And they also do a lot in terms of, um, community organization, so kind of bringing in, organizing volunteers for different events or serving themselves as volunteers for events. So that was also something else that, um, that came out of discussions around the REC committee. Um, and councilmember Dibala, were, were there any other nuggets of insight on the REC committee or the Grants Review Committee?
So on the Grants Review Committee, um, thi- this is, um, in, in, an example of a committee that we only see once a year, they have a fairly, uh, specific mission, if you will, they do it. They come to us, they tell us what they've found, there's a lot of, so there's relatively speaking, there's regular interaction with the council. Um, there's a pretty clear focus for the group. Um, the group has a job description for its members so that people who come who are interested potentially know what they're getting into, what skills are useful. Um, and, and it, it seems to function in, on a day, on a week, I guess it's not day-to-day, on a month-to-month basis quite, quite smoothly, um, so there's some, there's some we've heard pieces of that from some of the other committees as well, in terms of how things go when they go well. And that's part of the best practices piece to explore. Um, and maybe work into orientations for, uh, for new committee members overall. Um, that's not something the council has to decide on or, or, or do anything about tonight or maybe ever, but just to know about, about what, you know, that there are some really smooth, smooth running groups out there. Um, not, not to take away from anybody else, but just to say that that's an example. And on the Recreation Committee, um, it's been around for a long time and the work that it's done and it has done work in other community needs besides recreation um, has largely been self-generated, um, by council priorities being what they are now, particularly coming out of a year of significant social a- attention to social needs in the community. Um, I, I think staff and committee members that we talked to and both Talisha and I were intrigued by the possibilities that present themselves there of a group that has a lot of community connections. Um, has the ability and the track record of bringing volunteers to bear to city programs, um, as well as the capability to think about the, think about the, of the policy and think about the programs, think about what they look like, how they would run, how they would work. Um, they've, they've done a lot of connecting of the REC program to city residents. Um, do, done a lot of outreach, so, so that's another example of, of a, a, an opportunity, if you will. Um, and I was also, um, less familiar with the Emergency Preparedness and Committee and again, there, a connection into the community. Um, tapping volunteers, promoting programs, promoting efforts as well as creating programs that, where they see gaps. Um, so all three of these seem to, um, to offer some lessons for all the other committees, which is one of the reasons we wanted to start with them, again, not to take anything away from anybody else. In some ways, some of these are easier because they're a little more manageable, just a more clear, you know, review grants, evaluate programs, that's, um, which leads us to the conversation we'll have in a minute about what uh, what the role of the council is on, um, in, in charging, directing, interacting with committees. Um, so again, for the three of these, I, are, um, we'll, we'll let Casey pick this up. Um, these are our recommendations, go ahead, Casey.
Um, yeah, so, um, just, uh, again, um, in terms of the structural elements, um, and something that we've been recommending, as we noted before, um, having the seven to nine members, having two-to-three-year terms and two-year, two-term limits for most committees when possible. Um, and, um, having resident members who are residents of Tacoma Park with some exceptions as needed. So we just have here, um, kind of, uh, some notes on the current structures of these committees. Um, the Grants Review Committee, you can see is up to nine members, um, and they have two, three-year terms. Um, and the Recreation Committee has seven to fifteen members currently um, and has two-year terms with no term limits. And the Emergency Preparedness Committee, as I alluded to before, has seven residents, five organizational representatives and then these additional five kind of optional other representatives that are not filled at the moment. Um, and then they have three-year terms with no term limits. So we would be recommending, um, mostly using a common structure, um, for these committees, as we talked about before. Um, probably Emergency Preparedness might have some, um, slight deviation with, with the need for some of those organizational reps, but um, that's something we would sort out and try to simplify a little bit from the structure it's currently, um, organized with. Um, so I think you can go on to the next slide and I'll turn it over to councilmember Cersei.
Great. Um, maybe we should pu, should we pause here and ask if there's any comments on the, on the three committees? Um, because a, again, our recommendation is to retain these, um, pretty much as is. Um, making some of these, sim- simplifying the membership structure and
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Kovar has a question.
In code.
Um, comments, questions, I guess we should turn it over to the mayor to
And councilmember Kovar has his hand up.
Yeah, uh, two, two quick things, um, on Emergency Preparedness, I, I do think that continuing to have some uh, special representatives of certain entities, uh, that have a, either a direct involvement or in, in Emergency Preparedness or represent very large institutions, probably does make sense, so I just toss that out there. And the only other question I had, had to do with the Grants Review Committee, and I don't know if this came up at all, but um, you mentioned, you know, we only see them once a year or something to that effect, and one of the things we always, that we've always talked about or that we've talked about some is that, um, the follow-up on how the grants are doing and getting reports back occasionally on that, just curious whether that's something that did come up, so, we might even see them twice a year, not that I want to create more work for people, but just wondering if that was ever something that emerged in your review.
Um, I would take the second question first. Uh, the Grants Committee itself, the, the committee members are doing evaluations of grants, once the grants rewarded and the programs are up and running. Um, the piece that, that isn't happening is, is, is the loop back to, to us as a group. But they are, not only a staff doing it, they're doing it, and, and I was pretty impressed with that. Um, because that's a level of detail and follow-up that, um, that I thought was, was pretty, pretty cool, um. And I think we said that on the Emergency Preparedness Committee, there's probably a need to keep that, to keep those roles, whether it's to name those specific ones that are listed or, or, or to make a more, more general statement about organizational representatives, we're kicking back to the committee to get, get their um, get their advice and, yeah.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah, one thing I will say, um, and I know that we haven't, um, started just yet to talk about, um, recruitment in, you know, reten, retention issues with some of our committees. Um, one of the things that became clear to me through this process is the value of term limits. Um, sometimes you may have people who are just too kind to say, I don't want to do this more. And so they just, there's no end in sight, and so they just kind of, you know, step out and just never return phone calls, they got a ghost, the, so to speak. Um, and so, you know, I think the, the term limits will help. Um, the people who are volunteering to have an end in sight. Um, so that might help with, you know, retention, it may also help with, um, recruitment as well because people will have in the back of their minds how much time, um, and for how long they need to commit, so that is something that, even over the course of talking, um, to some of the committees, um, so far. To some of the committees, um, so far, we've already seen that that might be something that's really helpful for folks.
Yeah, and just to, just to say again, so. Um, we had, we had the factors that we were looking for, and these, these three pretty much check all the boxes. Um, in terms of uh, the purpose, what the council is looking for in the. The, the, the connection with the staff people, whether there's anybody else that can do the, do the work, all of that. Um, we looked at in making this set of suggestions, um, that's it, thanks.
Councilmember Kovar, are you good? Okay, um, I don't see any other hands, I'll just say, I thank you, I agree with the recommendations. Um, I also think it's, you know, they're, one of the things that I, I mean, I remember when the grants committee actually wasn't as highly functioning. As it is now, um, so, uh, it is important to understand like what does make a committee highly functioning. And I think part of the three committees that you picked out here to look at, um, the. Uh, deep engagement of the staff and how much effort staff puts in, I think is key. To um, these committees, um, especially I think turning around the grants review committee. Um, it was recruiting some new members, but also um, our, the amount of work our staff put into it. And getting a little clearer from the council on guidelines. I think all three of those things really, um, helped uh, people with the grants review committee. Um, we had great people who were in it before, I just, there were some things that just, you know, weren't clicking. We didn't have all the pieces clicking, um, as we do now.
Mayor, if I can note that, one of the things I think was important was that they had a clear structure, that a structure got put in. So I think that's something that really speaks to the value of this um, subcommittee of the council members. In looking at a structure, how that can be useful.
Yeah.
I'd also like to throw out that in all of these cases, the staff see great value. In the, in the work with the committee members, and they all seem to feel that it helps them to do their jobs.
Right, I was, actually, yeah, something else I was gonna say, it is something that is a compliment to the work that they're doing. And the, the goals and, yeah, and the, the tasks, the, the mission of the committee is clear. Um, I will say, like councilwoman, um, seriously, I had no clue that was the rec. Rec committee's um, actual full uh, purpose there, probably should have known that, uh, did not. Um, I think I would actually recommend is, I don't know if you can pull up that slide, but what you had there for the rec committee is not just. Adding end community engagement, but I don't know if members of the committee would be willing to kind of really take a look at. You know, given what their purpose is, not change their purpose, but think about changing their name and not just adding end community engagement. Um. So it's just, it's just a question if they'd be open to that.
We posed that question, mayor. Because we also, we also talked about um, the, the points of recruitment, right? So if people see rec, they may think. Basketball program and not necessarily, you know, some of these other aspects of their purpose. And so, you know, to what degree can we build up that community engagement piece? And maybe reconsider, rework the name.
Yeah, well, cause I'm also looking at this and wondering if, given um, what we did with the budget this week. And how we've been talking about the ambassador and navigator program, this to me seems to also fit with this committee. Um, and there may be a nice, you know. A good, good place to, to do that work together, um, with this committee. So maybe it'll morph into something, um, but anyway, thank you, I think this looks great and um, agree with all your recommendations. And I see no other hands, so you are good to keep rolling.
Perfect, um, so one of the things that has come up time and time and time again. Is we are having conversations with the various committees, and that includes the quasi judicial as well as. Um, the other non-quasi judicial standing committees is. How? How do they receive direction from the council? And then how do they then provide value to the council in terms of what they produce? For the council to weigh in, so there's a bit of a feedback loop.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we talked to um, folks on various committees who either said they've never engaged with the council at all. Um, we've heard from some committee members that they kind of flounder a little bit in knowing what their purpose is. Because they don't quite get direction. Um, we were just talking about the rec committee and the fact that they could be, we can broaden their scope. Well, if you broaden a scope like that, keeping in mind, the rec department staff um, manages them. We would need to give pretty clear direction, um, in terms of the areas that we want them to focus on. Otherwise, they may try to boil the ocean, which is not valuable as well. So one of the things that we wanted to do is talk a little bit about what is the role of the council? And how do we interact with our committees? Um, you know, of course, we talked already about the purpose of the committees. That we want these recommendations that are coming from the community, we want to leverage resident experience, we want timely information, we want community engagement. But what are we doing as a council to try to facilitate that? Um, so, you know, a few things that we kind of talked about is, you know, making appointments. So how can we make sure that um, we're available? Or, you know, have opportunities to drop in on um, on the committees periodically? Um, how do we have regular feedback on their work? Um, sometimes we may only, like Peter talked about earlier, the grants review committee. Comes to us typically when they're getting, when they've made their decisions about who they want to award. And that's typically it, but there's usually a lot that goes into the decision-making around the, the setup of how they're structuring things. The decisions they make on their awards, and as councilmember Kovar mentioned, you know, when they're doing those reviews. And they're identifying those lessons learned, you know, how do we make sure that we're a part of that process as well? Um, there's also, we believe, um. So far, we've run into um, some charges that are just simply out of date. And it doesn't mean that the committee itself is, is not valuable. It just means that the purpose and the charge of that committee had not been reviewed in a very long time. Um, and so how can we make sure that there is an annual review of the purpose and the charge of our committees? I cannot stress this enough, it is, everyone is busy. Everyone has things to do. It does not help us, nor residents that are volunteering their time. If they are working on things that are not of value to the council. We are taking time away from their families, we are taking time away from whatever endeavors they have. To work on things that we may ultimately ignore, and that's not fair to our volunteers. So we want to make sure, um, that we're kind of constantly reviewing those purposes and charges with an eye for, do we still need this? Is this valuable? If we need to tweak things, how do we tweak them in a way, um, to make sure that we are getting what we need? Um, and I, another thing is, you know, making sure that we are hearing um, periodic reports or recommendations. Um, sometimes we, um, we get them. But then the question becomes, do we act on them?
Mm-hmm.
On, it's, I think it's a little bit more than, you just received a report. I'm, I'm not picking on the house, um, the um, Arts and Humanities Commission, but we just got their report, right? So they just sent us a report, you know, they may come and, and give us some review of their report, but then what? Are we offering comments? Are we offering suggestions? Are we, if, if there are things that they're talking about in this report that we don't think quite matches what we want? How are we providing that feedback so they can then go back and do some other things? Um, and then also assisting with recruitment and outreach. Um, so it's a lot easier to recruit when you yourself may be passionate about the committee. Understand what the committee does, understand what the committee needs. So all of these other things that we've talked about already. Um, fit into enabling and empowering members of the council to know more about what the committees do. That can then turn around and make it easier for us to deal with recruiting and, and outreach to the community, kind of bring more folks in. Um, so I do kind of want to pause for a second to see. How folks think about maybe some of the roles that we've talked about. And what your thoughts are on ways in which the council can be a little bit more. Uh, kind of provide that feedback loop to our committees on, on, in a regular engagement cycle with the committees.
Um, I'll jump in. I'm trying to think of what kind of structure we can put in for the council to make sure that we do this. Cause it is something that we've, right, I can say, I personally am trying to figure out. Um, you know, when I first became mayor, one of the things that we started to do were have joint meetings between. Um, a uh, committee and council, and that went great. But we got through like a third of the committees, um. And, and you know, the fact is, is that normally our terms of two years. And so, uh, when you factor in the fall of an election year. It's kind of hard to have a meeting with a committee and talk about making long-range plans when you're having elections. And so, and you don't know if this is going to be the council that will, you'll continue to work with, so. Looking at it that way, that, that system didn't work. It was nice with the, with the committees that we were able to do it with, but we realized that that wasn't sustainable, um, to be able to do. Cause we've learned game through all the committees. Um, so that's just one thing of thinking about. And I don't know if it's, i- if it is kind of having a, assigning council members to specific committees. Um, so that it's that, you know, each of us gets one or two, or I don't know, what we, what we have, what we'll end up with at the end of the day. Um, committees that, and it's kind of like how we do our cog appointments and other things that. We're checking in with those committees, maybe periodically coming back and giving reports to council, um, and doing those things. Um, and then with that committee, maybe reviewing annually their purpose and charge, and then coming back to council and. You know, off, offering recommendations on updates if it needs to be, um, and then getting us all involved if we have to be. Um, but anyway, that's just some things like, you know, we could do on a, uh, each council, each council when it comes into, um. Uh, after an election, that could be part of the council, we could put that in part of the council procedures. Um, that for the turn, the two-year term, individual council members get assigned however number of committees. And we can outline, you know, the responsibilities, attending a meeting, whatever, however often. Reviewing the purpose and charge with that committee annually, and then coming back and reporting back to council. Something along those lines, I think my, I think we had to put the structure in place for that.
One thing I thought about was the possibility of incorporating um, committees somehow. In our priorities discussion. So as we are meeting, and maybe, I hate to say it, maybe our priorities discussions might need to be two days instead of one. But, you know, as we are fleshing out what our priorities are. To, to what extent do we have a paper to decide that's like, okay, here are the different committees and here's what they do. And so as we are thinking through council priorities, let's not forget about these committees. And are there some places where we want to make sure that we're specifically making certain committees aware that this is a priority for us? So, um, if there are aspects of, you know, um. More internet access and library service outreach. To try to encourage residents in certain parts of our city to be able to better connect to the library resources. Okay, let's go ahead and flag that for library staff, rec staff, and the rec committee. And so they know that's a priority for us. Um, so that's, that was one thing that I, I did wonder, how could we incorporate them as part of some of those discussions too?
And I had been thinking along those lines too, um, that build it into the priorities setting each year. But I, I, I liked, I think we, we should, I had discarded the liaison idea. But hearing the way you've just described it, it, giving a little more, um. Flesh to the concept, um, it sounds like that also could be very, very workable. Um. Yeah, so what about other people?
Um, councilmember Kovar has his hand up.
Thank you, I would firstly, I completely agree with the mayor, they're assigning people to committees makes sense. And, you know, if you think about it, there's only, I don't think we would be assigned to any of the quasi judicial ones. So there's, you know, eight to ten committees and there's seven of us, so most people might only get one. Or you could pick two people and have them each do it, but what we've seen with the work that's being right now on the committees. Um, and I think the work that we did around uh, the tree issues last year, and I think there are other examples as well. It really works to have subgroups of the council work on certain things. Because all the work that's going into these recommendations on the committees, if that was all seven of us each week trying to talk through this. We, we, we would have mainly, maybe gotten past, you know, the, the one meeting worth of information that you all have provided us over the past few months. So I think potentially having someone assigned to help cover or liaise, if that's the word with the committee. Is another version of that, and I think would help have a multiplier effect and, and make us operate more efficiently. So I, I agree with the mayor about find some, in terms of find some way of doing that. Yeah, and the other thing I would say is, it seems to me for the committees, these policy oriented committees, the standing committees, there's, there's two things that, that we want. One is we have certain specific things we might ask of them that would really help us. And then the second thing is, and I think one of the reasons people like to be on committees is, they, they would like to come up with some recommendations. They, they think are important based on their lived experiences and expertise, as, as you put it. And I think where the problem comes in is, when there isn't the, the more immediate liaison with the committees. Then in many cases, they're really putting a lot of work into something that maybe just doesn't match up with what we're looking for at the time. And so, um, I, I think if there's either really strong staff. Involvement in or uh, a, a better council connection, you're less likely to have that type of problem. Where they put in, you know, six months of work and come up with these great recommendations. And it's just sort of not, sort of not where we are at the time, and I don't want people to have to go through all that work for no reason. I do like the sort of frequent contact, and for example, we've heard from, not to single them out, but I guess I am single, not the complete streets committee. Not complete state streets committee has, has given us, you know, every month or six weeks or so, just an update on, on what they're thinking about. And I think that's really helpful to us as opposed to maybe not hearing from a co- committee for four or more months. And then suddenly they dump a big thing on us, and it's like, well, that's not exactly what they want. Then it's understanding, understandable that people might feel, why am I doing this? So to, to me, just that connection is really important. And I think I would also say, though, for people who serve on the committee, you might do some stuff and the council might decide that's not what they want. That doesn't mean that that was a waste, but there are going to be times when they prepare something that just doesn't work for us. And I think that should be explained also, so that they don't feel that it's almost automatic that their recommendations would be adopted by us. Because I don't think we're going that way either, so, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, I want to add to, uh, one of the things that's kind of impressed me, upon me, as I've gone through this process. And I, this is just speaking for myself, not for our, our subgroup, um. Uh, but is that it seems to me what works particularly well with our committees right now is. Um, when they are essentially working groups, um, very active. You know, people who have a very specific idea about what they're working on and a specific task. Um, and I think actually a little less of the quote-unquote advising. Um, and kind of policy direction and a little more of the sort of enacting. What um, directions and priorities we have, um, we have set. And that's not to say that we don't want to hear people's recommendations on policies, because of course we do. But I get a little nervous about an, an individual committee, um, necessarily driving a policy. Because it is just a group of a certain number of people, and as we've seen, they may or may not be representative of the full view of the community. And we, that's one of the things we're working on, um, and trying to um, improve in this process. But I think it also, as, as councilmember Kovar pointed out, there can also be situations where then, um. You know, the, the priorities or the, the efforts of the committees and council might not necessarily align with each other. And so, um, I think there's, you know, some advising role, but probably within kind of this broader context. We've been talking about with, with very specific roles and tasks and things that people are doing. Um, and that clear connections, and we're all kind of on the same page as it happens.
Mm-hmm. I think councilman Kostic, that's a really good. I think Councilmember Kostic, that's a really good. Distinction, I think also between like what, what a, a makes a good committee versus a task force maybe. Um, I think that's, I hadn't thought about it until you just put it in those words, but um, you know, it, it, giving a task force. They um, the role or the job of looking at certain policy issues for a short-term time. That we are able to define and then come back and give us recommendations. Um, I think probably is. More defined and helpful um, than sort of a standing committee on an issue where it just, it's hard given. As we talked about before, how busy everybody is to keep up with, um, just sort of like what it should, what, what policy direction. We need or, or want to give. And whereas like, as you, as we looked at today, the Grants Review Committee or um. The um, preparedness, it's like they have clear missions and tasks that they're doing. Um, so anyway, I think that's, it's interesting. Councilmember Siemens. You're on mute.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wondered, I would be interested in hearing Councilmember DeBala's uh, take on that. Because uh, I know she was involved with the Recreation Committee for a long time. And it seems that Recreation Committee has made um, several uh, recommendations to county. For uh, through the years for policy changes. So I wondered what your take was on that.
Yeah, well, I was just thinking about that, as, as it turns out. Um. So first I want to say that um, any committee, if it's only got seven to nine people. Is not by itself ever going to be representative of the cross-section of, of the different types of people who live in Tacoma Park. And care about a particular issue. So that part of a committee, of a standing committee's work. Regardless of which committee it is, that reaches out beyond its borders, bring, uh, beyond its itself. And brings in other types of people either, either to sit at a table and take basketball registrations. Or to volunteer once a year um, to, to do some community event. Or to come in as a resident expert and give their advice on a policy i- issue to the full committee. Regardless of how they do it, getting, getting out of that immediate group seems to be one of the keys to success. But, but to um. To Councilmember Siemens' question, um. I think the, the policy recommendations from a committee. Again, regardless of the committee, that are built on these more specific tasks. Um, are the most informed and somebody, I forget who, who now, but somebody put. Along the way, the last few weeks, that the tasks give you the reason to get together. Because you have to do this, or you're excited about doing that, or you've got a deadline. But while you're there. Then things start to cook in terms of bright ideas, innovative programs, policy directions that maybe need to shift. So my sense of it is, um. The Public Safety Task Force, for example, charged with specific policy issues. Answer these questions. Um, the, the Recreation Committee over time started perhaps more. With an advocacy or a point of view in mind rather than a policy. Um, and got to the policies through some of the programmatic work. Um, and, but I agree with you, the, the mix is, I think, pretty important. Um, and one of the, one of the, was we were going through the first set of committees, one of the things I was having a little trouble with was committee. It was um, was standing, it was regulatory committees that were so focused on a particular topic. That, that I didn't, it didn't seem to connect to, to other stuff. But um, it seems like the mix is really, is really important. Does that?
Yeah, I thank you very much. I, I think the um, um, takeaway for me is that uh. Yes, we, we do need to have the cross-section of the, of the community. Policy decisions, but the, um, but the committees can provide. Uh, whether we call them recommendations or whatever, we can provide information to the council, very valuable information. Because we're hopefully appointing people to the committees that have an interest in us, and a uh, knowledge or the uh. Uh, the motivation to kind of see what best practices are and, and make recommendations uh, based on. Kind of their concentrated effort on that particular topic area. So thank you.
And, and we haven't set up to talk specifically about recruitment tonight. Um, but we have touched on it several times. So before I say thank you, I will say, um. That several of these committees combine both the technical expert deliberately combine. Some kind of technical expertise or background in the area of concern. With a concerted effort to try to bring in different kinds of people, whether it's a, someone with a disability. Or somebody who's younger or some, you know, a, a home, so he's a renter versus a homeowner um, to. To try to draw from both of those, the lived experience and the technical expertise. Um, and not to just be one or the other. Uh, so when we get to recruitment, that might be something. To keep in mind. Um, and I am fascinated by this notion of, of a committee writing its own. Essentially writing its own job description for the purpose of attracting the kinds of people that they think will help. To the causes they see it, to the charges they see it. So just a couple thoughts on that.
Um, yeah, so next steps.
Alright. So, this is the end, but.
For the moment.
For the moment. Uh, but there's still uh, a few other uh, committees that we have to, to tackle. So we still have Arts and Humanities, Commemoration Committee. Um, we still have uh, Complete Safe Streets. Uh, we still have com- uh, Committee on the Environment. Um, feel like, oh, yes. Um, we still have the Nuclear Free Committee, um, as well as the Facade Advisory Board. So we will be coming back to you all um, to tackle a few more of the committees that are on the main list. Um, and another thing, as Councilmember DeBala showed earlier. Um, we will be coming back to you all, staff will be coming back um, to present on um. For example, the Code of Conduct reporting mechanism and some of the other aspects of the administrative functions that we'll, that we're trying to put in place. Um, to help um, people as a um, joint committees.
And we will have to start talking about recruitment very soon. Um, and, and the timing of that, but the committee will put, will put forth some suggestions on how to go, how to go about that. But um, if we're going to be appointing this summer, then we need to really start thinking about that sooner rather than later.
Cool. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns? Awesome. Alright, we'll be back next week.
Yay, thank you very much. Alright, I think that, I lost my agenda. Um, but I think that was it for this evening. Um, thank you, everyone. A reminder, don't forget to pick up your binders from Tracy for um, the City Manager um, interviews uh, next week. And um, next week, we just have one, one meeting on Wednesday. No, no budget meetings uh, next week. Just our, our uh, one meeting. Um, but I think.
Yeah, and the closed session.
Right, right, right.
Right, and the interviews.
But the staff don't have to worry about that. So, I was saying, speaking more for the staff, they don't have to actually uh.
Committees or whatever committees you want to do.
Right. Um, terrific. Alright, well, thank you all. Have a good evening and um, have a great Mother's Day this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.